Welcome to our council meeting on Monday 19th of June 2023. In doing so, we acknowledge the bundle of people, the traditional owners of the land on which we meet today, and pay our respects to the elders, past and present, and extend that respect to other Aboriginal and Torres Strait islander people who may be present tonight. Almighty God, we humbly beseech thee to grant thy blessing upon the works of this council, the direct and prosperous deliberations for the advancement of this city, and for the true and lasting welfare of the people of this municipality. In reading and acknowledging our obituary notices, if you wish, you may ask you to stay or stay seated, and we will have the traditional moment of silence afterwards. Brian Bolger, Helen Pollard, David Robertson, John Ashton, Terence Jones, Dom Jumovic, Tim McQuain, Juan Perez, Norm Cargan, Guntherm Segler, Ian Spry, Rosemary Heron, and Dorothy Smith. Thank you. Item four, our attendance record, we have one apology from Deputy Mayor Hon. We have no leave of absence. Item five, council members, executive declarations, 5.1, conflicts of interest. Does anyone have a conflict of interest that they see for tonight? Councilor Westerman.
I have a conflict of interest with item 13.2.6. It mentions the offshore hotel development. I think it's staying in the meeting.
Thank you, Councilor. No further conflicts of interest? Do we have any gifts and benefits to declare? No? Thank you. Item 6.1, confirmation of the minutes of the previous ordinary council meeting held on Monday 15th of May 2023. So I'll take them as read. Nobody has any questions? Councilor Campbell, are you moving or question?
Moving.
Moving. Seconded, Councilor Westerman. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Harry, thank you. Item 6.2, the confirmation of the minutes of this special council meeting held on Monday 22nd of May 2023. There are no comments or questions, we're talking here to move. Move, Councilor English, seconded, Councilor Border. Put the motion, those in favour. Harry, thank you. Item 6.3, the confirmation of the minutes of this special council meeting held on Monday 29th of May. Move, Councilor Knox. Do I have a second it? Councilor Campbell. I'll put the motion, those in favour. Harry, thank you. Now, are we ready for our deputation?
Yes, we've got two external people on my present. We've got Alex Razer from SPP and Christopher Chow from Chow Energy Direct. So you can invite Alex to introduce himself and introduce himself.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the image of the screen that's always there. Are you there, Alex? If you can unmute yourself. Are you there, Alex?
Sorry, Mayor, I am. Yes, I am here. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, that's you, Alex, is it?
Yes, it is, sir. Yes, it is, ma'am.
Right, now I'll send you on my screen. If you'd just care to introduce yourselves and go ahead with your presentation, please.
Sure, I think Michelle is going to pop it up for you from there. But yes, look. Look, yeah, thank you, councillors, the opportunity to meet today just briefly. I had a slide presentation, that's it. But look, we've been working with this project with council since about 2018. Our project is a solar agri-tech project. I've just got a few slides. I know I've got a very short window of time. The slides have a bit of detail on it, but I just want to touch on some of the salient points in each slide. So, if I may, is it okay if I just go through the slide?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, so our project revolves around the Waila open area space near the Waila substation across the road from, what, One Steel, GFG as it's now called. It comprises of a 30-megawatt solar farm, an eight-megawatt storage facility, and a three-hectare agri-tech facility, which effectively is a greenhouse structure, but incorporating some specific innovations. Next slide, please. So our project is, yeah, so one hectare site. Our project, while it's going to make its cultural development, 100% of our water is supplied by the solar field. Because we're fixing guttering on the solar and the water will be reticulated into a reservoir and then fed into the systems comprising the agri-tech capability. Next slide, please. So there's a number of innovations within our agri-tech development. As in, the first is the guttering, of course, which is our 100% source of water. We also have a number of reasonably high best-of-breed and industry-advanced technology to ensure that the green development is operating efficiently. So it involves UV and reverse osmosis water treatment, automated pH neutraliser for the water, an automated moisture and fertigation balancing system, and onsite remote monitoring, both onsite and offsite actually, automated shading, and wireless sensors which then instruct the automated systems to release more fertigation, more water, less water, to achieve the optimum efficiency and growth yield of the development. Next slide, please. So I won't go into all those details, but that slide there demonstrates the comparison between our greenhouse development and if we were to grow blueberries, which is our crop of choice, in a normal, traditional outside environment. So, but generally speaking, we're using 80% less water. Each yield, each growth should grow to about 200% more dense and larger than an outdoors variant and yield between 80 to 150% more produce within that development. Next slide, please. So the site is perfect for a number of reasons. The proximity to the substation does have some cost advantages with respect to connection. Waila obviously has, being a mining town or an industrial town, has a range of resources that are close at hand that we can utilise, which we've developed a relationship with over a number of years. We've already been developing this project for about five years. We've done DA Development Application Documents Studies, Environmental Studies. We actually did submit a application previously, but under a different owner. But now it's with Chow Energy, we have to resubmit again. We've just been seeking a new land tenure arrangement with council, which is why we're meeting today. My company also develops the original six-megawatt project that is currently commissioned and active in Edward Street in Waila. So we've been here for a while. We've gotten to know the community and I'm sure a few councillors there that are still sitting can remember my ugly face from previous presentations. Next slide, please. So, yes, so the agri-tech component, ignoring the solar aspect of things, because everybody knows what a solar system is generically. But the agri-tech component is there as a R&amp;D, less than commercial-scale development. It's going to employ about 10 to 20 people. But it's there to validate a number of our assumptions in order to attract future development and future investment opportunities for other projects and other stages. So it'll validate our water collection, water collection modelling, validate our reticulation and storage of water. It'll help us to validate the testing and optimisation of ultraviolet and water treatment. Same, and we're also going to be testing a range of different plant varieties. There's about 28 different blueberry varieties and there's around about 12 different raspberry varieties that we will be looking at. And we also wish to entertain and involve tertiary organisations such as South Australian University, who we've been speaking to, to set up education programmes and research programmes. But ultimately, the facility is there. It's IP-independent in that it's not a project site that's owned by a particular project owner. It allows other investors to come in and look at what we've been doing and then they can make their own decisions about for their project, how they want to structure it and configure it based on the testing and the modelling based on our initial three-hectare R&amp;D facility on this current project site. Next slide, please. So our project, who are we? Our project is two main parties to our project structure. The first being Chow Energy, who is a public listed entity, which is currently in iron billet production, but also has a wholly-owned subsidiary which is also public listed, which is Chow Energy, under which they're seeking to develop, build, and invest in solar projects. So Chow Energy acquired this project in 2019. It's already built and commissioned over 200 megawatts of solar in South East Asia and it has another 450 megawatts currently under development, including the 30 megawatts here in Waila. Sustainable Power Partners, that's the local organisation, being the originator and the developer of this project. It has the expertise in relation to the Australian energy market. Providing consulting for over 20 years to retailers, generators, network providers, and regulatory bodies. We've also installed on our own basis around about 85 megawatts of commercial farming solar and residential solar, mostly on retirement villages. We've developed 11 megawatts in Burma. And we were also in 2009 rewarded a $60 million grant to build a big dish, actually in Waila. So it was a solar thermal project. And as I mentioned briefly earlier, we developed a six-megawatt solar project in Edward Street in partnership with Shanghai Solar Energy. Next slide, please. So just to give an indication of timelines, I won't go into all the steps in the full timeline here in the time available, but we are looking to commission and construction finished and built by Q2 2025 with commissioning and testing going on for a two-year period after that, as is normal in solar projects commissioned under the Australian then-market. Next slide, please. Is that it? Okay, sorry, that's it. I had to do a bit of work to cut it down to a digestible chunk in five minutes. I hope this presentation covers the, gives you a bit of an understanding about our project. We're excited to move it forward. We've been trying to get this lease arrangement or an ATL formalised for some time. We kind of had a two-year hiccup because GFG has some concerns in relationship to their encumbrance. But I think they've all tried, appreciate the council's efforts to remedy that situation as GFG are now comfortable with a few clauses and conditions in the ATL for us to administer and meet, particularly in relation to environmental studies. It's more to ensure that any pollution or contamination from their plant will not affect the produce and the production coming out of our greenhouses.
I think very, very appreciative of that, Alex. Are you up for questions, if any members have questions?
Sure.
Anybody, any questions? Councilor Border.
Yes, thank you very much, Alex.
Can you hear Councilor Border?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Can you hear me, Alex?
Yes, I can, yeah.
Yes, wonderful. Thank you so much for your presentation. How connected are you with the space industry with the way that you're growing blueberries? Is there any sort of future vision to collaborate or connect in with how they grow any produce in space, outside of out there? But I've heard that's the way they do it these days.
Well, at the moment, no, we're pretty much grounded on planet Earth. But as I said, we're looking to collaborate with universities and hopefully, once we, we are looking to do a commercial-stage project in Waila. We had earmarked the Muridil Land, but as you're probably aware, a lot of your discretionary land decisions are somewhat, let's say, been arrested by the hydrogen project. So we're still keen to look at that and are working with InvestSA to see if we can progress that second commercial-scale project, which would be 150 megawatts of salt and 30 hectares of agri-tech. As to how that can be applied in alternate, we are looking at opportunities in Oman, in the Middle East, where it's, you know, almost as dry as it is here. But who knows where the research and development and the tertiary relationships might lead us.
No, thank you for that. Any other, Councilor English?
Thanks, Alex. If you've got markets for the produce you're going to produce, are they local markets or is it for export or?
Right, I'm looking at both. I currently have actually an engineering office in the Philippines. I have actually been speaking to the Department of Foreign Affairs and Trade. So we are looking at some permits and licensing to export. But based on our, certainly for the first couple of projects, it'll be pretty much consumed by the local market. As given our environment, we will be registering our facility as fully organic. Also, that closed-loop design and architecture and obviously the environmental protections provided by the greenhouse structure.
Tell us, any other questions?
I'm hoping it'll come into the community.
So you have anything you want to add?
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to, on behalf of Chow Energy and the equity sponsor, just thank the councillors for the consideration and the time and the effort of council operations team as well in getting us to where we are today. We do hope and look forward to, you know, building and operating a successful, sustainable project which adds value to your community.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Alex, to appreciate your time and the update. Excellent presentation, thank you.
Okay, I appreciate it.
That's it for the moment then, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye bye, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Now, we've had that presentation. Just wondering whether we should suspend standing orders, if somebody would say move that one, bring forward item 13.1.2, which addresses this very matter. Move, Councilor Border, seconded, Councilor English, that we suspend standing orders for 15 minutes? I'll put the motion, those in favour. Harry, thank you. Let's get that item up on the screen.
Do you want us to speak to that? Yeah, thank you, ma'am. So as per the presentation on the report, this project has been in the making for quite some time. As Mr. Razer mentioned, that we had a little bit of a glitch for a period of time where we had an indication from Liberty One Steel that they were concerned about for potential implications for their steelwork operations, having particularly an agtech operation sort of within the immediate vicinity to the steelworks. The agreements of lease, I'm just going to check with J D Croney and Minda, the agreements of lease actually restricts their ability to sell the produce produced by the agtech facility. So it's not for sale, despite the comment that was just made that it's going to be potentially consumed domestically, sold domestically. So the agtech component is very much to trial the technology and to prove up the methodologies that they're planning to use for a commercial-scale operation down the track at a site yet to be determined, whether that's in our LGA or elsewhere. So the intent of the report for council today is essentially to revisit this subject, noting that the existing council resolution that has been placed now for a period of time was to negotiate terms for the potential use of the site that was seen to be potentially at odds with the data transfer between council and the steelworks. Over the last couple of months, we've been working with the steelworks in order to come up with some revised wording, which is now included in the agreements of lease document before you, that provides ability for the funds to take the project forward, noting that for them to actually get the point of being able to execute an actual lease under the agreements of lease, they've got eight months in order to meet a number of conditions precedent to be able to evolve from agreements of lease into a lease arrangement. So I might stop there and then have a response to any questions.
Councilor Knox.
Just wanted to check that they have been aware of all of these conditions, et cetera, in the documentation.
Through the man, yes. So prior to the, sorry, this happens, coming to a pause over the last period of time due to the issues raised by Liberty One Steel, we had actively engaged, consulted, and negotiated the terms of the agreements of lease up to the point. We then shared the revised agreements of lease that's presented in the council agenda tonight prior to this meeting, so that they're fully aware of what is in the agreement. And we made it clear through correspondence that we'd only bring the agreements of lease to council to consideration if we got confirmation from the proponents that they were happy with the draft lease, which they have provided in a written ball稿 and email. So they are fully conversant with all of the provisions.
I was confused for a while there when Alex was saying where the markets were, because I wasn't under that impression that I couldn't sell produce. My interpretation of how he put it was markets for the produce that they're going to grow there. So either I'm completely wrong or they're thinking they can sell.
For the mayor, yeah, it's a bit of ambiguity there. The agreements of lease is very clear. So maybe he was referring to future produce that could be generated from a commercial site down the track. So, yeah, so the agreements of lease is correct there.
Any further questions to the CEO? In that case, we do have a recommendation. Yeah, I was just going to do that. Well, can somebody move that we go back into standard meeting procedures? Councilor Border, seconded, Councilor Campbell, I'll put the motion, those in favour. Harry, thanks. Now, we have a recommendation there. Councilor Knox. And seconded, Councilor Simpson. I'll put the motion, three-part recommendation as printed before us, those in favour. Harry, thank you. Item eight, petitions, we have none. Item nine, matters adjourned, displayed on the table, we have none. Public question time. Headline. We have a question under 10.1.1, the Australian Radioactive Waste Agency. Question is, it is noted that Mayor Stone met with representatives from the Australian Radioactive Waste Agency, ARWA, on Tuesday 2nd of May 2023, while it was potentially on the transport route to Navendee. It is a public interest matter to know if transport routes were part of the discussion included in general matters. The answer to that question, Mayor Stone advised that the meeting under reference was purely a meet and greet between ARWA representatives and council. In this instance, the matter of transport routes was not discussed. Is that their only question? Moving on to item 11, council member activities. They're on the screen. Is the councillors? And seeing Councilor Border's name there, I must thank him for telling in for me at the last moment over in Canberra. Appreciate that. Committee reports. Item 12, we have nil. Item 13, reports from council offices, 13.1. Office of the Chief Executive, his ordinary report, not necessarily written ordinary, but an ordinary report, 13.1.1. I presume CA will take that as written, anybody's got questions? I presume C E A will take that as written, anybody's got questions?
Yes, through the man. So I could take the report as presented as read, but I did want to provide just an initial verbal update regarding the visit to Canberra last week. And Michelle was just going to bring up on the screen a list of the people that we met with. We've been salt and council border on the city of Wilder, also the Spencer Gulf region, support Augusta and Paul. Eric, so you'll see on the screen, there was quite a large number of both ministers. Senators and senior executive across a number of different portfolios. We will provide a written report to the next council meeting that provides details of some of the information that was exchanged between the council and the federal government. At this point in time, I just wanted to firm that one of the key messages that come out of the visit was the federal government's very acute and strong focus on the new regional investment framework that they published off the back of the federal budget. None of the ministers have been, we met with clearly indicated that any conversation that we, whether as City of Wilder or we as the Spencer Gulf or or the residential region, which we have with the federal government. We need to clearly articulate how, what we're wanting to, you know, discuss aligns with the the framework. The framework has four pillars. One is around investing in people. One is investing in places. One is investing in services and the last one is investing in industries and local economies. I believe that the, our meetings were highly productive in terms of sharing with the federal government some of the things that happened within our place and space. And it was interesting that a couple of ministers didn't really know where Wilder was. So that was interesting. So it was good to be able to point to a map and show where Wilder is and the fact that we have a footprint within the residential region as well as Spencer Gulf region. We talked about the opportunities that are in front of us, ranging from hydrogen renewable energy through to mining and manufacturing with particularly green steel to events in space as well as tourism. So in short, the information that we presented was really well received. A key message that we got from a number of the people we met was that we'd clearly done our homework and we've got some good plans in hands. And on behalf of the Spencer Gulf region, one of the objectives that we were looking to open up is the opportunity to come back to Canberra in a few months' time. Once we have discussed and agreed with the state governments, what the what proposal is that we'd like to, we've been both the state government and the region, want to present to the federal government and fully engage them on. So as I said, I'm looking hard to read the report required, given the timing of the visit and the transcutting of what I've just brought up. We can't blame this occasion to respond to any questions.
Any questions to the CEO, that's your report? Oh, somebody here to move the receipt of. We've got the screen back up. Move councillor Inglis, second to councillor. There you go. We received the note to CEO's action report. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Thirteen point two corporate services, ordinary reports, thirteen point two point one. However, practice for access to meetings and documents. And most of these reports coming up, we have addressed informally at workshop or briefings previously. So I've tagged that as read. Does anybody have any questions? Councillor Knox. Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Westernman.
Make one, sir. Sorry, I missed my opportunity for a quick question. Sorry.
Quick question.
This is in regards to the.
Word of practice for access to meeting and documents.
Ah, sorry. Sorry, dropped.
Have the motion, move the seconded, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Thirteen point two point two adoption of behavioural support policy. There are no questions?
Thank you. Through the man, thank you. And members will have noted that consultation on this particular policy closed at five P M today. I inform you that from the date and the time of writing this report to this moment, there has been no additional feedback. So you do have all of the feedback presented to you that has been received on this policy. We did make one extra post on Facebook in terms of pushing this consultation out last Friday. But again, as I said, there has been no further feedback received.
Thank you. In that case, will somebody care to move councillor Todd move councillor Simpson seconded? Adopt behaviour support policy, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Item thirteen point two point three, council member professional development policy. It's only two recommendations. I take it it's read. There are no questions? Call for a mover councillor Knox. Seconded councillor Todd. That was another chocolate wheel there. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Item thirteen point two point four, employee behavioural values and conduct policy. Slightly different. I take it as read. Does anybody have any questions to the CEO? If not, I'll call for somebody to move that recommendation. Councillor Westernman, seconded councillor Campbell. Put the motion, those in favour? Harry. Thirteen point two point five, the monthly budget report for May twenty twenty three. The C Q O guidance, do we accept it as read or does anybody wish to speak to it?
And just to respond to any questions.
Do we have any questions? No questions, guys? Then I'll call for a mover and a seconded of the monthly budget report. Move councillor Inglis, seconded councillor Todd, I'll put the motion. Those in favour? Harry, thank you. Thirteen point two point six, the twenty twenty three twenty four annual business plan and budget adoption and rate declaration. Take it as read, CEO, or do you wish to speak to it?
Yes, I'm happy to take it as read. I will flag in advance that when we do get some motions, I think what would be best if we went through and did if it's in my senior's turn to get moving the seconded for these. In saying, I'm happy to take the reporters' res, I'm sure there will be some questions that councillors will want to ask about what's included in the budget and what's not included in the budget, even though we've worked shop it a number of times. Today is the formal adoption, so really do encourage councillors, if you want to just clarify or check in moving these resolutions, what does it actually mean? Had to respond to any questions, provide any further information as required.
Councillor Boarder.
Not so much a question, just an observation of, and a summary just for my own benefit. It looks like the way that it's put forward here and even handed balanced approach, it keeps service levels and it moves the council towards a break even in twenty six, twenty seven. And it's likely there's going to be an increase in variable properties in the next one to two years, which have not been included, which is a conservative proven prudent method. So we're sort of allowing for the a sustainable movement forward, knowing that down the track there might be turbo boost for that, which is not included. But that's a nice little potential. Do I understand that correctly? That sounds reasonable, sounds very reasonable.
In short, yes, what you just summarized is correct. Just a point of clarification, when you talked about future revenue changes. I'm assuming you're referring to this transition from site A to capital B.
No, it was just the, as development comes on board, more variable properties, we're aware that may happen, but we haven't any. I'm sort of coming from the perspective of when people are going to ask us why at this price, why at this increase. I just wanted to have a few dot points that I could refer to of how prudent and even handed, I think this is especially in relation to the other the cities and other towns.
Yeah, thank you for that. So yes, you're right. It doesn't take into account future potential rating scenarios with increase by residential, commercial and business development that we expect will occur in the city over coming years. So your summary is correct in regard.
Any further comments or questions? Councillor Simpson.
Did you confirm that in reading this document that we've from twenty three to twenty four, sorry, twenty four, twenty five, we moved to capital value?
Right, yes, that is correct. Again, just for full transparency, we've been looking to kick off the consultation with the community regarding this transition from capital, sorry, capital value to capital value later this calendar year, September, Octoberish.
September, October.
So we, you know, that is quite deliberate that we want to engage the community separate from the budget process to talk specifically about rates. Because unfortunately, typically when you talk about, and the reason why the question of clarification is that there is this confusion that when end of property values change over time, that that may impact what people ultimately pay. Our key message is that the change of site value to capital value doesn't, in of its own nature, mean that will actually generate more rate revenue from our existing rate basis, just the way that we allocate the rate collection across our rate payers, both current and future. So we will do a deep dive, we'll do a full workshop and modeling scenario planning by the councillors and community, so that it's a very informed process.
Councillor Knox.
Just want to make a point that when we convey this information to the community, we should point out that the living or landscape levy is not about doing, it's a state government levy. And in fact, it's a tax. I think we need to point out that we have to collect it on their behalf and pay taxation.
Thank you, council. Any further questions or comments? So yeah, I've got two questions. And I'll notice them looking at what perhaps our residents will be looking at. And that shouldn't come as, oh, I mean, any surprise. The rec centre and the childcare centre. We know there are various reasons why they're on hold. Considering our business plan that we are now releasing states that work will be completed by January the thirtieth. What are our next steps as far as what do we do, when do we do it? Without putting it off. That can be criticised. Is that one? And also another particular issue, which has been one pushed by our residents for a long time. And I know the issues that we've got behind the scenes, but I pose the question. When will we look at replacing the toilets right next to the visitor pod down at the foreshore? I asked those three questions because they are three issues which our community are going to be looking at. And like, we certainly need to be ready with the answers. And in fact, not just one. But let me know, as we have updated recently about the rec centre, I think there were only four negative comments. And that's what I'd like to see us doing, because I do believe there are issues that the community will be looking at when we release in a lot of minutes.
Thank you for those questions, man. So what I might do is I might actually ask different people to respond to each of those questions in turn. So I'll ask Kristin Clark to provide an update regarding the rec centre project. Jade Valentine, an update regarding the childcare centre and grants. About the toilets and what's included in the project.
Thank you, good chair. In regards to the rec centre, what we've done here is we have divided up the work packages from a single work package into many work packages. We've had our consultant complete that work and it is now being returned to council and we have our, one of our engineers reviewing the packages to make sure that we're happy with them before we go out to market. We expect to be out to market within the next fortnight, where the packages will be smaller, where we try to engage with more contractors who are confident that they can do the work. The risks that we still face are that the cost, time and indeed even availability of getting the contractors in may impact on the project, but we do know that by going out for a large package, we weren't going to be able to progress with that option. So the option now in front of us is that we'll manage that internally, but we still need to have contractors prepared to do the work for the right costs. So that work is now being done and I expect it will be out to market in the next fortnight. Any questions?
Thanks, Lucy.
I think Krista can continue with the childcare redevelopment update.
So with childcare, we we have engaged with a contractor to perform the works. At this stage, we're just monitoring what some of the long lead time items are. We've also got a review underway for childcare to confirm that the works that we are completing on the building will will mean that the interior and the exterior standards for childcare continue to be met. So at this stage, that project is paused while we do some further work on whether or not we proceed with that project.
Yep. So in the last year budget and our upcoming budget, we have, we had allocations for three toilets, so that covered seat park with the job park, four toilet and wisdom park. You've updated pricing through link deliver two toilets for the budget got. So the full size would probably save in city park and four for three months. And then we'll look to our budget for some of the future, you know, sort of what we need to operate to start from our city wards.
Thank you very much for those, councillors. Appreciate it. Right, if there's no further questions or comments, we will start with the recommendations. Recommendation one. We'll have a move and a seconded, those. Move councillor Inglis, seconded councillor Boarder. Put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Recommendation two. I have a move, please. Move councillor Boarder, seconded councillor Simpson. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Recommendation three.
I can just make one very small note. We've noticed in the report there weren't much of a lot of the other figures. It was just in case our evaluations changed at the last minute, because I've taken the most recent ones. The only figure that changed was our total people valuations from Friday, but it was a non-ratable property, so it didn't affect anything else. So that amount there is the only thing that changed very slowly.
Thank you. Move councillor Knox. Do I have a seconded? Yes, at the top. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Recommendation four. Recommendation four. Somebody care to move that notion, please? Move councillor Simpson, seconded councillor English. I'll put the motion those in favour. Harry, thank you.
They've all been unanimous. Can we record? Unanimous? I think it's pretty important with.
I'll get, I'll check on that because my understanding is that the word unanimous is not required, but I wasn't going to say anything at this stage.
It's not necessary required, but I think it gives the, it gives the impression that the council is unified and solidly behind the the resolution.
Can't do that, council. Yep. Right, recommendation five. Somebody care to move that? Councillor Border, seconded. Councillor Todd. Those in favour? Harry, thank you. Recommendation six. Care for primary residents. Somebody care to move that recommendation councillor Simpson? Seconded councillor Westerman. Put the motion, those in favour? Harry. Recommendation seven. The declaration of separate rights, the regional landscape levy. Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Border. Those in favour? Harry. Recommendation eight, declaration of service charges. And a mover, please? Councillor English, seconded councillor Todd. Those in favour? Harry. Recommendation nine. The rating policy. Somebody care to move that recommendation councillor Westerman? Seconded councillor Border. Those in favour? Harry, thank you. Recommendation ten, the rate rebates. Somebody care to move that recommendation councillor Campbell, seconded councillor Clavica? Put the motion those in favour? Harry, thank you. Recommendation eleven, rebate of rates, general cap. Move councillor Todd, will have a second there? Councillor Campbell. Those in favour? Harry. Recommendation twelve, the worst management remission of service charges. Somebody care to move that councillor Border moved, councillor Todd seconded, those in favour? Harry. Recommendation thirteen, payment of rates. Must be have to have one of those. Somebody care to move councillor Knox, move councillor English seconded? I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Recommendation fourteen, loan borrowings. Somebody care to move that recommendation councillor Clavica? Seconded. Councillor Border. Those in favour? Harry. Recommendation fifteen. Uh the LTFP table, long term financial plan and asset management strategy. Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Todd. Put the motion, those in favour? Harry.
Harry, with the recommendation of a thirteen, you didn't have your hand up. Is it unanimous, that one?
Put my hand up for everything, yes.
Okay, that's cool.
Yeah. I want to recap at this stage, everything's unanimous. Uh, that was the last one then. Thank you all. Moving on to item thirty, oh, I mean thirty point three city growth. Thirteen point three point one, community grants. You have a recommendation there before. I was going to call for anybody with comments or questions, but do I have a mover and second? We're already. Do I have to move councillor Border, seconded councillor Knox?
Oh, I ran.
Oh, I ran. Now that walk off. Oh, I ran. Councillor Knox and then councillor Border seconded. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Item fourteen, fourteen point one, council, uh fourteen point one point one, the mayor's list of engagements.
Thirteen point one.
Thank you. Cross the line out. Thirteen point four point one, the disposal of land, another assets, assets policy review. Councillor English, did you move?
I did.
Councillor Campbell, she seconded.
On your face.
Nice.
Well, as soon as I came, I feel as the chocolate will have stopped. I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Now, the mayor's list of engagements, I'll look at a couple of, I should briefly. However, I know, because you were wondering, on Wednesday the seventeenth, we had a meeting with Mr Ayen and Kemner. And he started calls from the Department of Foreign, Television and Training, the opportunities and challenges for growing trade and exports in the region. That would very much affect gathering exercise on air, behind and relationship building. And I do notice, whether it's a coincidence or not, there seem to be more groups and organisations now wishing to meet with the CEO of the mayor to establish a relationship. Whether it's a coincidence or whether it's, it's something. Uh, moving back. On Friday, the twenty sixth, made this reference to that. There are my attendance of eight SAA strategic plan workshop. Now, SAA is the South Australian Coastal Councils Alliance. And while being on the Spencer Gulf cities, I drew the short straw to be on a group. Uh, very interesting, their main meeting, as it says there, was the preparation of their strategic plan for the next year. So a very steep, uh elite learning curve for myself. One of the things that did come out of that was that it is very much regional coastal councils see significant importance in one body, but the Adelaide councils sort of doing things on their own. So one of the observations that came out of that for the group to work on is that we definitely need a whole of state approach by the government. It is, at the moment, that anything to do with the coast and is very ad hoc, subject to who's got the loudest voice and the biggest problem. So that's a committee that I think only meets by memory every two months or every three months. So my role on the Spencer Gulf cities includes that. Uh, also on Wednesday, the thirty first, had a meeting with CEO and representatives from Flinders and Upper North Health Network. They're going to establish a relationship, but they were looking at the latest info we might have for them to discuss on the housing issues in Waiara because they have issues there. And also the potential impact of one airline carrier. So that was just general discussion. On Monday, the fifth of June, both I and the CEO met with Professor Lucy Waters and, or from the Adelaide Rural Clinical School. They were updating us on a proposal, we'll establish a South Australian Remote Medical Medicine Academy very much based in the Spencer Gulf regions. Uh, they're out looking to get grants to get this underway. They seem very, very confident. And if the proposal succeeds, there would be a focus on our region. And again, if successful in attaining the grants, set this up. I see sixty medical students being trained in the Spencer Gulf region over six years. And the aim is to retain them in their region. But that would be the only other ones I wanted to add to specifically, if anybody's got any other questions. Oh, sorry, I see that.
Um, not a question, but just a, a um part of that last meeting that we threw to you off of view to attend, but I'll actually see it on that day. So it's that brilliant. So I think um if um Jade Valentine attended.
My apology, I should know she doesn't look anything like you. And I mean that in a good way. It comes back to me now. Uh, would somebody care to move to receive my report? Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor Todd. Put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Fourteen point two point one, the monthly information report. From city infrastructure, city growth. So I'm just ready, just the CEO and just, anybody got any questions for any of those reports? There are no questions. It must have been a good report then. I'll put the motion, bear in mind, I'll call for a mover councillor Westerman. Seconded councillor Todd, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Right, item fifteen, notices of motion. We have one notice of motion from councillor Knox.
No, we don't. That was last meeting. Uh, no, I don't. It's actually in the agenda if you can. It was in connection with the um Nicholson Avenue and the high school. It was lovely to talk to it.
I will um declare, be involved in this one due to the road traffic, things like that, being involved with this.
Thank you very much. Fifteen point one point one. Thank you very much councillor Knox. Do you wish to speak to that excellent Knox before?
I'll speak to her if I had to. Get a second there.
Do I have somebody to second there? Councillor Border?
For me, it's just a common sense thing we should look at it as a when they're dropping kids off in the morning, you're picking kids up in the afternoon. Traffic in that section of the street is pretty horrendous. I know there are two sets of lights, but there's a lot of car parking in the street as well. So and buses too. So I think we need to at least look at it. Um I had a complaint from a parent and a grandparent. This is probably they can put that in the motion.
Thank you councillor Knox. Just a question to CEO, is that for us to address or do we have to refer it?
Uh, through the mayor notes, it's our roads and our parent controls. So any traffic management that is affected on that roads. Um whilst it has to be in line with the Department of Transport and the minister's guidelines in terms of traffic control. It was, it's only in the first instance what we can be in progress relation and then see the rather previous. Thank you, CEO.
That has, we have a motion seconded. Put the motion those in favour? Harry. Item sixteen, question of notice. We have one question there from councillor Knox to do with why the harness roads in Clough, do you wish to ring that out or just have it?
I'm much more likely to do it. Um I realise there are some people keeping horses out and stables there. Um, but the fact is that we're not having any race meetings or plots meetings in Waiara. Um, the facility then which is not going to be under, which is obviously underutilized. There's the pub rooms, etcetera, out there, but the racetrack as well. Um, and I just think we should, we probably should have been in some dialogue about the long term future of the problem because it's um it, it's a, a lot of land sitting central in the middle of Waiara. It's getting very, very little use.
Thank you councillor. And yes, that is one we've sort of missed in our legacy issue, I guess. Uh, for the, did you do that on, I guess? Thank you councillor. Do we have any motions? Uh, well, any further questions? I'll start again. Item seventeen, questions without notice. Anybody have a question without notice?
Do you need a second after that other motion? Oh, there's just a question, sorry. As you were.
That was just a question. Any further questions without notice, councillor Knox?
Well, I have a couple of them. I'm only going to put one forward. Um, what's the latest on that South Australian government grant for recreational facilities? How's that proceeding?
Ask the director to respond in the first instance.
We should get the draft preliminary report from the Office of Sport and Regular Closer Business tomorrow. And then we'll schedule a meeting for them to come to present it to the elected member body either the following week or the week after that.
Um, my answer to that, so the, the grant that was referenced was an election commitment by um the state member. Um, the, the election commitment is over land that we actually don't own. So we've had to engage the Department of Regular Sport in terms of the potential allocation of that funding towards um um that project and that particular site. Um, and as it happens, Department of Regular Sport were in town just recently um looking at our facilities and preparing, what was the name of the report?
The uh connected and active communities.
Um, so that will help inform um where we go to from here in terms of how uh that, that city dollars might be applied in future.
Thank you, CEO. Uh councillor English?
Um, Justin, since the uh attendance closed for the, the Hoggstone Power Station, is there any more update on that? Whether they addressed any of those issues?
Through the mayor, um we've had a couple of meetings with um officers of the Office of Hydrogen Power. Be sure they're considering the evaluation, they haven't shared any information with us because it's possibly they're subject to natural um inten requirements. Um, so we're not aware of any other information that we can share um at the time. We know that they are on track to finalize their assessment and hopefully make announcements early to mid-June, early July, sorry, get it right on. Um, so haven't received any red flags that they're not going to be able to make an announcement as planned. Um, but on that, I'm not sure if there's anything else that we can share because um they are, for, for obviously good reason. Um, not giving any information to us given that it's a live extended process. Um, if I may add to that question through the officers that are there. Um, we have had in recent times, um the Office of Hydrogen Power indicate that they'd like to provide an update briefing to counter.
to council regarding the Hawkenock and Hydrogen Hub. So we'll look to that within the coming period of time, I'll give you that looking at early July from memory, so we will be up to bring some information back as we think of organising.
Thank you, CEO. Item eighteen, motions without notice. Have any motions without notice? Item nineteen is the consideration of confidential items. Do we wish to take a break now and then come back to do with the rest of the agenda after break? Would somebody care to move that we adjourned, please? Move councillor Knox, seconded councillor, where's the ones there now? Fifteen minutes. What would the motion those in favour? Harry, thank you. Right, we'll resume after our adjournment. I hope somebody please do move and then second the resumption of our meeting, councillor Border, seconded councillor Simpson, those in favour? Harry, thank you. We're now going to confidential. With our massive gallery, mostly. Would somebody care to move that we go into confidential? Councillor English, seconded councillor Westerman, those in favour? Harry, thank you. Now, we're in open council. Thank you for your attendance. And with the time at seven twenty one, the meeting closed.